I call this board meeting to order. The time is six oh one. Welcome, I want to welcome everyone to our September eighth, twenty twenty five ready called School Board Meeting. We're pleased to see you here tonight and on behalf of the board, we'd like to thank each one of you for joining us, for your commitment to our students to give them the best education possible. As Dr. Sam Nix said in convocation, setting the bar high and helping our students reach their full potential is important. I'd like to recognize our district police department for the excellent work they are doing this year. It's work that may go unnoticed, but it's vital to goal number one. So, thank you. Dr. Salazar, Pledge of Allegiance, item two.
Yes, Mr. Henderson, members of the board, this evening we have students from elementary and Villarreal Elementary here to help lead us in the pledge. At this time, we'd welcome the principals to introduce Ms. Ana Fernandez from Villarreal Elementary and Ms. Lynn Martinez from La Ciesca's Elementary.
Good afternoon, Dr. Salazar, members of the board. With me, I have Noah Escivell. He is the son of Noe Escivell and Isabel Escivell. Noah is a nine-year-old proud student at Villarreal Elementary. He is a fourth grade student who loves math and hopes to become an engineer someday, maybe even work for NASA. He enjoys chess, robotic, swimming, reading, and video games. Noah also loves serving his community as an altar server at our local church. Next, I have Lily Daniela Martinez. She is a nine-year-old, fourth-grade student at Villarreal Elementary. She is the daughter of Brian and Ally Martinez and big sister to Julie and Sofia Martinez. She is also a member of the Hog Cheer Squad, Girl Scout Troop Twenty Thirty-eight, Athletic Club, Junior Master Naturalist Club, Robotics, and the Hog Media Crew. She is an active member of the Gathering at Olmito Community Church. In her free time, Lily enjoys singing, reading, watching old movies, and exploring nature.
Good evening, esteemed members of the board and Dr. Salazar. It is my pleasure to introduce you to two incredible Longhorns. First, we have Carter Munoz. Carter is a fifth-grade student and a spirited cheerleader who brings energy and positivity to everything she does. She is the daughter of Esther Atkinson and Juan Munoz. Carter enjoys swimming, exploring her creativity through arts and crafts, and spending quality time with her dog Astro. With her caring nature and passion for helping others, she aspires to become a teacher one day, inspiring students just as her teachers have inspired her. Estrella Lopez. Estrella Lopez is a thoughtful fourth grader who loves spending time at home with her parents, Miguelia Moroiga and Juan Lopez. She is an active member of our chess team and participates in EAE activities, showing curiosity and a willingness to take on new challenges. While she is still exploring what she wants to be when she grows up, Estrella's love for learning and strong family connections promise a bright and exciting future. These two remarkable students are shining examples of what it means to be a La Ciesca's Longhorn.
Ladies and gentlemen, these students are here to help lead us in the pledge. Will everyone please rise for the pledge?
Thank you. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. You all may be seated. And thank you so much. I'm going to ask the parents of our students, please do stand up who just presented the pledge and be recognized. Thank you so much. Item number four, roll call. Mr. Maya.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Donald Henderson?
Present.
Mr. Martín Castillo?
Present.
Jesús Amaya, I'm present. Leticia Quintero?
Present.
Mr. Ruben Treviño?
Present.
Ms. Andrew García?
Present.
Mr. Kevin Montes?
Present.
Dr. Gonzalo Salazar? Ms. Leandro Ortiz is not with us, but a member of that firm is standing by, from what I understand, if we need him.
Thank you. Mr. Secretary, Mr. Secretary, have you verified the agenda was posted as required by law?
I have.
And we do have a quorum present. Item number five, public audience. We have two members of the audience who have signed up, Ms. Ariel Lozoya and Mr. Rogelio Núñez. Before we go over the, we'll go over the rules before we ask you to approach the podium. So, I'm going to read a short summary. The next item on the agenda is public comment, which is the time for members of the audience to address the Board of Trustees. Before we begin, I will remind our audience members of the board's procedure for handling public comments. Anyone who wants to speak during public comment must sign up prior to the start of the meeting and list the agenda item or topic they want to discuss. For effective meeting management, all public speakers will be allowed a maximum of three minutes to address the board in accordance with board policy, BED Local. Any public testimony speaker who requires a translator will receive up to six minutes, twice the time for an English speaker to address the board. Please keep your comments or criticisms civil and courteous. Please also avoid using profanity and refrain from making personal attacks on others during your opportunity to speak. We ask that you not discuss students who are not your child. Yelling, inappropriate, uncivil, or discriminatory comments will not be permitted. In the event your comment in the judgment of the presiding officer constitutes a complaint or a charge against an employee or officer, it may be necessary for me to interrupt and ask you to stop and direct you to proceed with the school district's formal grievance procedure, or to have the item heard in executive session depending on the nature of the complaint. If a speaker is seeking board resolution of a specific complaint, that concern should be addressed through the district's grievance process, which can be found online and include policies DGBA, FNG, and GF. Grievance forms can be obtained at any campus administration office or in the central administration office. Thank you. Our first speaker will be Ms. Lozoya, and the subject is going to be negligence. I'll let you know if you approach the podium. I'll let you know when the time will begin. So, if you approach the podium, I'll let you know. Welcome, Ms. Lozoya. When you're ready, let me know and we'll begin the timer.
Yes.
And we will ask you to note just not to mention any names, and then he'll let you know when there's one minute left by raising his hand, and then we'll let you know when the timer's up. Thank you, Ms. Lozoya. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. I ran into a, you know, issue with my child at school this past week. I did go over your policies and procedures, and I did see on the student code of contact, I know I was looking for the one for this year, but I couldn't find the one for this year on the school website, but I did find the one for the year twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. Regarding the negligence that I'm saying, my son did ask if he could use the restroom, and he was denied, which caused him to have an accident and be sitting in the chair with the accident for about approximately twenty-five to thirty minutes. On here, it does say, you know, prohibited adversies techniques. It's on here for the pseudo conduct. It says denying adequate sleep, air, food, water, shelter, bedding, physical comfort supervision, or access to the restroom facility. So, right, it was on there as well for that. I did see that under your policy program for child abuse or neglect. The, as far as abuse, my son was emotionally injured, you know. It does say here for emotional, mental or emotional injury to a child that results in observable and material impairment of child's growth and development. My child is autistic, and we've worked very hard with getting him to continue going to school, and this, however, has affected him where he no longer wants to go to school at the moment. I picked him up early today due to that reason, that he didn't want to be in the campus. As far as neglect, it also falls under the category of neglect, where it says neglect means an act of failure to the act by the person responsible for the child's care, custody, or welfare evidencing. I thought I would have more time, I'm sorry, but again, it falls under a lot of your policies as far as neglect and child abuse. I did look under the Students' Rights and Responsibilities, Student and Parent Complaints and Grievances. I do see where, if I want to file a suit against a professional employee that was in charge of my son at the moment, I did have to come here as far as that to continue to, for the lawsuit. I did speak to a campus officer regarding the situation, however, yes, if I can.
Ms. Lozoya, thank you so much for coming. We are not allowed to address you or respond, but we will, you will hear from district administration.
Yes.
So, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Rogelio Núñez regarding the Conjunto Festival. When you're ready, Mr. Núñez, we will begin the clock again at three minutes. I'll ask Mr. Castillo.
I'm ready. Okay. Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Salazar. My name is Rogelio T. Núñez. I am part of the Narciso Martinez Culture Arts Center, which has been in existence now for thirty-four years. This will be our eighth year here in Los Fresnos. We will have the Conjunto Festival October third and fourth at the Memorial Park. Our magazine, which I've only given you a couple of sheets from, is not ready yet. It should be ready probably by the end of the week, but you would have a full magazine, forty pages color, but I am giving you five of those pages, which is, the first page would be, again, the cover of the magazine, and then again, one that you should and will recognize is your Performing Arts Center. It's the ad that you all purchased. Then we also have the Bucket List, which came last year and interviewed several people, including myself, Mr. Longoria, and Mr. Castillo, who are the band directors or the Conjunta directors at the high school and at the elementary school. And then there's two articles written by Mr. Castillo and Mr. Longoria about their project that they have at the high school and that they have at the elementary school on Conjunto Music. So, we hope to see you all there. We're looking forward to another great event. Last year, we did have rain, but we found out that we can still have the festival because we have covered area, and we didn't have to cancel. It was a little bit uncomfortable for a moment, pero the music continued. Everything was on time. We finished on time, no issues with anybody, and so we're hoping to see that again in twenty twenty-five. So, hopefully, we will see you there. Pass the word around to your students, to your families. The Conjunto Kids will play Saturday starting at four o'clock, and they've got a forty-five-minute slot. The high school starts out, and then the little kids finish it off, and then we'll have the continuation of the event that Saturday night. But it starts Friday night at five-thirty. We are fortunate that there is no football game in Los Fresnos, so we don't have to mess with the traffic that usually occurs at the high school, but that's never been an issue, you know. So, that's always been complimentary to the police department, which is very cooperative with us, complimentary to the public works, and to the whole city of Los Fresnos, the EDC, so on and so forth, who have supported our event now for eight years in Los Fresnos. So, we hope to see you there. Again, I know you can't make kind of comments. I should have brought a Conjunto to play for you, but that would have taken up your time. But anyway, thank you very much, and we hope to see you soon.
Thank you, Mr. Núñez, for coming to address us. Item number six, public comment. We didn't have anyone sign up for public comment. Item seven, district recognitions. One, teachers achieving a higher level of proficiency in modeling lifelong learning. Dr. Salazar.
Mr. Henderson, members of the board, twice a year, we set time aside to recognize, well, every month, we set time aside to recognize either the achievement of our students or the achievement of our teachers. Twice a year, we recognize teachers that have attained an advanced degree benefits the teacher and that household, as we have a system of tiered stipends, but also the students are beneficiaries of the efforts of our teachers. And so, tonight, we want to welcome our campus principals to introduce us to the teachers that are receiving advanced degrees. Can I get an indication of who is going first? Los Fresnos United. Ms. Treviño is here to introduce us to a teacher from Los Fresnos United. We have nine master's degrees and one doctoral being presented tonight.
So, good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, and Dr. Salazar. Tonight, we have the privilege to introduce to you to Mrs. Julia Diaz, one of our outstanding teachers at Los Fresnos High School. Mrs. Diaz complete, completed her master's in education, in educational technology from UTRGV. Mrs. Diaz completed her master's as a tool to help her enhance her curriculum so her students could continue to benefit from her professional growth. She is an example of fostering growth, one of our pillars in Los Fresnos CISD. Mrs. Diaz has begun, Mrs. Diaz has begun her sixteenth year in education and just started her third year at Los Fresnos High School. In her short time at Los Fresnos High School, Mrs. Diaz has helped numerous students obtain an industry-based certification in the field of business and is also sponsor of our VIDA program, which helps support family, community during income tax. In her spare time, Mrs. Diaz enjoys spending time with her family and supporting her two children in their various hobbies and sports. We are so proud of Mrs. Diaz, and we are thankful she chooses to serve here at Los Fresnos High School. This is Julia Diaz.
Ms. Monica Ramos, representing administration at Los Fresnos United.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, and Dr. Salazar. I'd like to call up Peter Bonilla and Sarah Rodriguez to stand with me. First, I have the honor of introducing Peter Bonilla, who recently earned his master's degree in educational administration from Grand Canyon University. With sixteen years of experience in education, he is committed to becoming a leader who supports educators in their growth and development. He currently holds a one-year principalship certificate and is preparing to take his passful exam in November to become fully certified with the goal of serving as an administrator here in LFC ISD. In twenty twenty-four, Mr. Bonilla did participate in our aspiring assistant principal cohort, so he has shared his gratitude that LFC ISD opened the door for him to pursue this degree through our partnership with GCU, and we celebrate his commitment to students, colleagues, and our community. We would also like to recognize Sarah Rodriguez, who recently earned her Master of Science in Nursing, Nursing Administration from Texas A&amp;M International University in Laredo. Although this is her first year in the education system, she brings one and a half years of nursing experience and aspires to grow into a strong nursing leader, ultimately advancing into a director of nursing role. She currently serves as a school nurse, providing direct care and health education to our students, and looks forward to expanding her leadership impact in both education and healthcare.
Good evening, esteemed board members, Dr. Salazar. It is my honor to introduce you to Ms. Michelle Amado Aguilar. Ms. Aguilar has recently earned her master's degree in political science from Sam Houston State University. What makes this achievement even more remarkable is that she accomplished this while working full-time as a paraprofessional in our special education department and also welcoming a new child into her family. Her dedication to both her career and education is truly inspiring. Ms. Aguilar intends to continue her studies by obtaining her teaching license, and she has a strong passion for continuing her career in the field of special education, whether at elementary or at secondary. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Michelle Amado Aguilar on this outstanding accomplishment.
Good evening. I would like to present Ms. Tania Vázquez, our dedicated, dedicated third-grade teacher. She is currently in her second year of teaching, and we are grateful to have her be a part of our Hog family and LFC ISD family. Recently, she earned her master's degree in elementary education, an achievement that reflects her dedication to lifelong learning and the success of her students. Ms. Vázquez is deeply passionate about supporting children as they grow and reach their full potential, and she looks forward to continuing to serve and grow alongside our wonderful community. Beyond the classroom, she also gives her time and talent by supporting our, our students through cheer, helping them build teamwork, confidence, and school spirit. Go Hawks. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Vázquez for her hard work, dedication, and very well-deserved achievement.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to introduce you to Ms. Catherine Garanás, who is beginning her fourth grade, her fourth year as a dedicated teacher at LYE. Today, we recognize and celebrate her outstanding accomplishment of earning a Master of Science and Technology degree from Grand Canyon University. Ms. Garanás is a true rising star. Her passion for teaching, commitment to innovation, and her drive for excellence inspires both her students and colleagues. Her Longhorn family is incredibly proud of her hard work, perseverance, and this well-deserved achievement. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Catherine Garanás on her milestone in her professional journey.
Good evening, esteemed members of the board, Dr. Salazar. Today, I have the honor to introduce to you one of our amazing teachers, Ms. Danielle Leal. Today, we celebrate her accomplishments, dedication, commitment to lifelong learning. Ms. Leal is a proud Falcon graduate, who just in two years, short two years of teaching, she has already earned a master's degree in special education. We are extremely proud to have her as part of our Laureles family. She's an exceptional educator who truly makes a positive impact in everyone she interacts with. The passion she has to work with students with severe cognitive disabilities is truly remarkable and inspiring. They say some are born to teach, and she truly embodies that statement. We are very proud to have you, Ms. Leal, and thank you so much for choosing to serve in Los, in Los Fresnos. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Salazar. It is my honor to introduce Ms. Valeria Amaro. Ms. Amaro recently earned her master's degree in Science of Instructional Design from UTRGV, an accomplishment that demonstrates her commitment to professional growth and excellence in education. She began her career as a UTRGV teacher resident, and it has grown tremendously since then. This is her fourth year in education, all of which has been proudly served at Olmito. Today, she is a dedicated fourth-grade teacher who inspires her students daily. Beyond the classroom, Ms. Amaro has taken a leadership role this year in planning and guiding the implementation of the new Bluebonnet curriculum alongside her peers. She's also a proud sponsor of our Dazzling Paws, our dance team. Ms. Amaro's journey from teacher resident to instructional leader is a true testament of her hard work, passion, and commitment to our students. We're really, really proud of you.
Good evening. Today, I'm here on behalf of Mrs. Chavez. She couldn't be here with us tonight, but I am proudly introducing Ms. Yadira Martinez, if she could join me. Ms. Martinez is a kinder teacher at Rancho Verde Elementary. She has a master's in early childhood education from Grand Canyon University. Yadira, too, was a step-up student in our district while while going to college and also a teacher resident. She's a teacher leader in Kinder. She teaches fourth grade again at Rancho Verde Elementary. Ms. Martinez exemplifies the profile of a leader by fostering growth in her students and in herself. She goes, she chose to be, to get a Master's in Early Childhood because of her love for phonics and helping students with social-emotional skills. She serves as a cheer sponsor. She's a positive force at Rancho Verde, and with that smile, I can see how students and teachers love you. Ladies and gentlemen, Ms. Yadira Martinez from Rancho Verde Elementary.
I'm back. For the final award tonight, we'd like to celebrate Dr. Crystal Chio. She recently... Dr. Chio recently completed her doctoral work at Lamar University after 18 years in education. Her aspiration is to grow as both a researcher and an educator, using her dissertation as a way to make a real difference in her field while contributing to the growth and success of Los Presnos CISD. Looking ahead, she hopes to continue sharing her research, collaborating with others, and aspiring students and teachers the way her own mentors inspired her. She has expressed her deepest gratitude to her late mother, her family, and her friends whose love and encouragement carried her through this journey.
I'd like to ask the families of our distinguished teachers, if they're here, if you could also stand up, because we know this is also the family support that made this happen. So if you're here tonight with your distinguished teacher, please stand. Thank you for that commitment to excellence and teaching lifelong learning. Please feel free to be excused. We know tomorrow is School Day, so if you'd like to go ahead and excuse yourself, you're welcome to leave. Next item on the agenda, District Presentations, item eight, one, 2025 Early Literacy and Math Goals. Dr. Salazar.
Mr. Henderson and members of the Board, Hospital Three requires that we present early literacy and math goals before the Board, and it is our way of monitoring student progress. Here to introduce us to this presentation is our Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Jennifer Stumble.
Good evening, Dr. Salazar, members of the Board. I'll wait a minute. Okay, so I think we're good to go now. I'm going to apologize in advance. We had a lot of technical difficulties this evening. So thanks to Ms. Holland. I am not as tech-savvy as I used to be, but she was able to help me. So, but you are going to notice a little bit of, what I'm going to call like formatting. Thank you, sir. When you go from Google to PowerPoint, we had a little bit of a struggle tonight. So, please forgive that. Tonight, we are here to go over our early literacy and math goals as well as our college career and military readiness goals. And as Dr. Salazar says, we do bring these each and every year as updates. We are studying some, we are projecting some new goals for the next couple of years, but these are things that we bring, we will bring back to you every year as an update of where we're at and where we're going and how close we are to those goals. So we're going to start with early childhood, and this is pre-K. In pre-K, we use an exam called Circle that is given at the beginning, middle, and end of pre-K each year. You can see by these numbers that our pre-K students have historically done very well on this exam. So it's very hard to continue to set such high goals and reach those goals when you already see numbers at some campuses in the very high 90s. But our pre-K teachers are committed to continuing this growth, and so what, the first column that you see is the 2025, what the goal was. The gray column tells you what our actual, what we actually reached. And then we have a 2026 goal and a 2027 goal. We originally, I want to point out that we originally set out to tell some of our, to say with pre-K, growth would mean 100%. And we said, is that really feasible? Like, to say that every single student that walks in your door is going to succeed on that exam? And the teachers adamantly said, yes. Do not, we want, push us to say that we've got to grow. And so, that's how we left it. So, if two or three percentage points would have had them at 98 or 100%, that's where you see that they're at, because they want to set those goals for themselves. Then we move on to kindergarten. In kindergarten, this moves to a different type of exam. We use MAP. So MAP is given at the beginning, middle, and end of each year as well. Again, same format. You see that our 2025, what our 2025 goal was, where we actually fell in 2025, and where we intend to be with 2026 and 2027. You'll see here that there's just, where we, while they're similar, we see a little bit of lower scores in math. This is something, if you'll think, remember back to STAR scores. This is a common trend in our STAR scores as well, that we're seeing a little lower performance in math than we are in RLA, which is one of the reasons that we made a curriculum shift this past year. Just as a reminder, that curriculum shift for this year is only for four through eight. So Kinder through third will make that curriculum shift next year. And so we anticipate that by that 2027 goal, we'll start to see these come up even more once we have that new curriculum place and we're becoming more experienced with delivering that particular curriculum. Same thing in first grade. Again, we are using MAP, which again is given beginning, middle, and end of year. The first column shows our 2025 goal, where we fell for 2025, where, what we have set as our goal for 2026 and 2027. You see those here again for reading and for MAP. Second grade is the same. Again, we are using the MAP exam. Again, it's given at the beginning, middle, and end of year. I should point out that what we're looking at here, though, is the end-of-year score. So we're, our goal is where do we want to be by the end of the year? Again, 2025 goal, 2025 actual score, 2026 goal, and 2027 goal. In third grade, we shifted to the, to looking at the STAR exam. In the past, we were looking at both MAP and STAR, and we made a strategic decision to just stick with STAR for third grade. Realistically speaking, the students take the STAR exam at about end of April, and then they were, they turn around and take the MAP exam about two or three weeks later. And what we have found that is in the grade levels where we're giving both MAP and STAR, that MAP score doesn't always align to the STAR score. And we think a lot of that is just attributed to fatigue. The students, it's the end of the year. They already took a STAR exam. They knew how important that was. And then you try to tell them, this one is just as important, and they look at you like, really? Are you sure about that? So we decided, you know what? In all fairness, to both students and teachers, we're just going to look at that STAR score. MAP and STAR, again, they do align, but we do see that the MAP score is usually not as high as the STAR score in any grade level where we give both MAP and STAR. So here, we went ahead and showed you where we were at in 2024, what our goal was, where we were at for 2025, and then what we project our goal to be for 26 and 27. Any questions about those early, pre-K through third-grade goals, before we talk about CCMR?
Mr. Trevino?
Yes, Dr. Stumble. So you mentioned that the shift in math this year covered grades four through eight, and then you said next year will be what grades?
K through three. And that was strategic. We, A, we knew that accountability-wise, we knew that we needed to start with our upper grades because we need to see some growth in accountability in math. And so, some people might say, well, why wouldn't you start with the lower grades and then move up? But we needed to make sure that we see an increase in those math scores pretty quickly. And so we wanted to focus on those tested grade levels. We also knew that our third-grade teachers this year are doing dual, it's their first year of dual language, so they have a lot on their plate. So using a new math curriculum and trying to teach in both English and Spanish would have been a lot in one year. And so we took that into account. And then we also knew our own bandwidth across the district and how much support we would be able to offer. If we would have gone K through eight, I'm not sure that we would have been able to support the teachers in the manner that we wanted to be able to support them. So that's why we split that and did half in one year, half in the next year, so that we're able to give the teachers the support that they need.
Any other questions? Mr. Montes?
Should I wait, or should I?
Okay. Let me make a comment while we wait for the IT. I think that was very prudent of rolling it out, breaking it because of bandwidth. I think that made a lot of sense. Are you finding the curriculum, the Blue Bonnet, is it work? I know anytime you start something new, it's going to be a little bit challenging.
Absolutely.
Are you, are you finding it? You know, you can see where it's headed, that it is what you were hoping?
So, absolutely. Has it been a challenge? It's absolutely been a challenge. Anytime you have a change, change is hard. And this is a massive shift in the way that we teach math. I would say that we have, at the moment, I would, if I'm being completely transparent and honest, we're about a 50/50, where we got about 50% of our teachers that are like, okay, this is, this is a challenge, but I, I can do this. And maybe you feel like you're on roller skates some days, but they're navigating. And we have others that are still struggling quite a bit. We have designated supports throughout the school year. We have one that starts again next week, where we have Region One coming in. They model lessons. They model lesson internalization with the teachers. And so we're doing everything we can to support. It is only the fourth? Is this the fourth week of school? Yes, it's the fourth week of school. And so, is it normal to be struggling? Absolutely. I don't think we would expect anybody to be an expert in the curriculum yet or feel 100% confident delivering it. But are we well on our way there? Absolutely. And do we have the support in place to try to get everybody there? Absolutely.
And change management models show that you have your early adopters, and then you have others that come on board a lot easier. And then there are those who need, require a lot of more support. So being at 50/50 is not, it's a good place to be with this very challenging task that we've undertaken of switching the manner in which we deliver instruction in math.
Thank you. Mr. Trevino?
Yes, Dr. Stumble. And thank you for bringing that up in regards to the third-grade teacher. What support are we providing to the third-grade teachers that, as you mentioned, we have a new curriculum, and then they've got to be also testing?
So they don't have a new curriculum. That's why we chose not to do the math, new math curriculum this year. They, so, the challenge in third grade is dual language this year. So we didn't want them to have more than one challenge in any one year. So, the new math curriculum is four through eight.
And what supports are we offering for the teacher in third grade that's having to teach both English and then Spanish?
Absolutely. So those supports started last, the last spring. We started training with our dual-language teachers, if I'm not mistaken, in April or May. As soon as that, third graders took their last STAR test, we started training for third-grade teachers on dual language. They had additional trainings in the summer. I was able to participate in two of those and sit alongside those third-grade teachers. We have an excellent consultant who's been with us since the start of our dual-language program, which would be three years now. Her name is Eloise Miller from Sidletz. She comes in. She not only delivers professional learning, but then she spends a week here. And so she goes into the classroom. She models lessons. So it's kind of set up to where she'll go to a campus, she'll model a lesson. We'll go into a classroom and debrief, and the teachers have an opportunity to ask her questions about what she was modeling and how she delivered that. And the teachers have found that to be extremely valuable. And so that's the support that they have throughout the year. So it's not just sitting and getting training, but it's actually seeing. And I, I have to say, I think our third-grade teachers are doing an amazing job. And I think it's also because this is the district's third year doing this. So while we thought that the transition might be a little bit harder, it hasn't been quite as much. But I think that's also because it's the district's third year, and so we're able to better anticipate what they might struggle with and provide those supports ahead of time.
So having general and bilingual instructional coaches assigned to help them, bilingual strategist or content specialist. Ms. Amaro, anything else? Any other supports that we're offering?
Yeah.
I think we pretty captured them all.
You reminded me. I apologize too for continuing to cough. I'm sorry. But, so once a month, our content specialist, our bilingual strategist, and our instructional coaches have a collaboration day. And so, a lot of that time is spent on anticipating, what are, what is it that teachers are going to be struggling with in the next month? And ensuring that our instructional coaches who are on the campus are able to be those boots on the ground that's right there for the teacher to support them in what we anticipate that they might struggle with, whether it's, you know, content-based or whether it's language-based.
Thank you. Mr. Montes?
On those collaboration days, how many times a month do you go back? And after, you said a week after she comes in, does a training. After that, you have the collaboration days. How many times a month do you go back?
So the, the trainings that, for dual language and the collaboration days are two separate things. Oftentimes, we are talking about dual language in those trainings and those collaboration days. But off the top of my head, I can get you the exact number of times that we have Ms. Miller coming in this year, but off the top of my head, it's about every, every other month, to every two to three months. But the teachers see her for a day of training, and then they see her for about two hours on their campus at some point for the rest of that week. So she kind of travels from campus to campus. So that's kind of what that looks like. So the cadence of that is probably about every two months. The collaboration days are monthly. Those are held once a month. Where it's a full day, full agenda, once a month. But they're two separate things.
Also, could I get a copy of the goals? Because mine's, mine's a little different. It says 21, 22. I know you said you're having trouble.
We were.
But could I get a copy of that?
Absolutely, yes. I think it's the wrong copy in general, sir. But we can, I'll get an updated one.
Mr. Trevino, I know you had another question.
Did you say that there was general ed and bilingual ed as far as supports as well, meeting with the teacher?
Yes, sir.
Did I hear that correct?
Yes, sir.
And then monthly collaboration with instructional coaches?
Correct. It's bilingual strategist, content specialist, and instructional coaches. So our bilingual strategist and our content specialist are district support center staff, and our instructional coaches are campus staff. So they're based on a campus. They're working directly with the teachers every day. So it's kind of like, we like to call it like the bilingual strategist and the content specialist are an expert in the curriculum or in the content. And the instructional coach is the expert in pedagogy and how you deliver that. And so it's important that they are working together to meet needs. Sometimes teachers are struggling with curriculum. Sometimes teachers are struggling with content. Sometimes it's classroom management. Sometimes it's the instructional strategies that I'm using. I know my content. I'm just falling short on the way that it's being delivered. And so we want to make sure that they're always, they're, I almost said always, always. They're almost, they're always communicating and that all three of those teams are always working together.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Stumble. Any other questions?
Okay, still have CCMR. So, real quick, one last slide. So this, this is our, our CCMR goals through 2029. And before you, just hear me out, before you say, why is, why is the goal going down? So just, there is a, there is a method to our madness here. So if you look at the class, I want to remind everybody that this is lagging data. So I did this by the class of. So last year's graduating class, so students that walked across the stage last May in 2024, 84% of those students earned a college career and military readiness. Eighty-four percent of those students earned a college career in military readiness point. As a reminder, that means that they either passed a TSI exam, they took, um, a certain number of dual credit courses, or they earned, um, an industry-based certification. We set our goal, our sights this year to en, to ensure that we got to at least ninety-one percent with the class of twenty-twenty-five. Because we know that we need to hit ninety percent in the accountability system. That plays a large part in the high school being able to earn an A as a campus, which also impacts the district being able to earn an A because the high school carries about forty percent of the district's weight. So, we set a goal of ninety-one percent because we wanted to get at least a percentage point over that ninety. Um, and we are, um, it has an asterisk by it because this is, uh, the final reports are not submitted to TEA until mid-October, but we are projected that that will come back in ninety-four percent. So, we had on almost a ten percent increase in our CCMR point from one year to the next, which will have a huge impact on accountability this year. So, you might say, well, Dr. Stambach, why are you going down? Why are you setting your goal at ninety-one percent for twenty-twenty-six? Well, the way that this is, um, the rules of the game are changing a little bit. So, now, students have to be a completer, and they have to pass their industry-based certification. So, this past year, they only had to be a concentrator, which means they needed to complete three CTE classes and pass the industry-based certification. Now, moving forward, they have to be a completer. So, they have to complete four pa, four courses, not just any four courses, but the four courses in their pathway, and pass the industry-based certification. And so, we know that that makes it a little bit more challenging. Um, and it's possible that we will have students that might get three classes and pass the industry-based certification, but they might not get all four and pass that industry-based certification. Um, and so, we, we want to be realistic, knowing that because it's going to be a little bit harder, um, we just wanna be realistic with our goals. But we do wanna ensure that we're always above ninety percent because that's where we need to be in our current accountability system. Um, so, we've set those at ninety-one for right now.
Any questions, Dr. Salazar?
Dr. Stambach, can you also? Points to different tiers of industry-based certifications?
Absolutely. So, that's another reason why the game is getting a little bit harder. Thank you for reminding me of that. Um, so, right now, all industry-based certifications are the same. So, um, if you have a student who's be, um, in the health path, health science pathway, and they're going to become, uh, certified in phlebotomy, they take their four science, health science classes, and they take the phlebotomy, um, IBC at the end of the year, they get their one point. You might have a student who takes four classes in welding, um, takes the welding IPC, earns their point. You might have a student who wants to be a teacher, and they take their four, uh, education prep courses, take the, um, teacher assistant, uh, exam, pass that, uh, they would get their, their CCMR point. Starting in twenty-twenty-seven, the state is gonna tier those. And so, those would not, those three examples that I just gave you would not necessarily all have the same weight. Um, it's not a hundred percent clear how those are going to be tiered. Um, we are, we are making some assumptions about how we think they're gonna be tiered based on data that the state has given us. But essentially, what they're seeing is the more demand, correct me if I'm saying this wrong, but the more demand that there is for a job, um, across the state, and the labor market, across the state, which we might argue with because it's a very, Texas is a very big state. And what we need here in Region One is not necessarily the same as what is needed in Austin, Houston, Dallas, San Antonio. But nonetheless, um, they are, as of right now, going to be ranked the same across the state. Um, so, I'm gonna give you an example. Right now, we have a lot, our criminal justice pathway is very popular. So, we have a lot of students who, um, do, choose criminal justice, take those four courses, um, and take an exam related to, um, security. Am I correct? Thank you. Security services or dispatch nine-one-one. That is not going to be ranked as high. So, we, once we get to twenty-twenty-seven, if students continue, and that continues to be one of our most popular pathways, all of those students aren't gonna earn a full point. They're only gonna earn possibly a half a point. So, what we're doing right now, Ms. Holland and the CTE office is, um, working to see, on the ones that we know are probably going to not be worth a full point or worth as much, what are alternate certification exams that might be worth a full point that we could start to transition to now, so that we're not waiting until the last minute? Obviously, those exams are probably going to be harder, um, and more challenging, and it'll be a transition for the teachers as well. They're used to the current exams. They're gonna have to change curriculums, the way that they're teaching. So, a lot of change that'll be involved in that. So, that's also why, um, we've set that goal at ninety-one percent. Because there's a lot of changes at the state level, um, that will impact our students earning that CCMR point.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Yes, to Ms. Montes.
So, you think with the change of everything that's happening, uh, you're saying it's gonna be harder, right?
Could be. That's an assumption. It could be.
But, uh, I really believe in, in, in the team we have here to, to make it happen. Uh, now, going back to the ninety-one, twenty-seven, ninety-one, twenty-eight, ninety-one. Now, you think those numbers will go up?
Absolutely, sure. We, we wanted to be realistic with this, and we also just, there's, there's a lot of unknowns in terms of what TEA has shared with us this far about where those points will lie. So, we don't wanna set unrealistic goals that we can't meet. Um, obviously, if we're, we always want a hundred percent of our students to graduate with a CCMR point. But there's gonna be extenuating circumstances that prevent that from a multitude of reasons. There are changes that TEA is making that is one of those things. It's gonna impact how many students are able to leave with that CCMR point. Um, but because there are so many unknowns and so many variables, um, we wanted to ensure that we set a realistic goal, but also keep it above ninety percent because we know that it's got to be above ninety percent if our goal is to earn an A as a district.
But your subtle communication of high expectations is noted and appreciated.
Absolutely.
Characteristic of the Los Fresnos Board. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Maya?
Yeah, I just wanna point this out, that a, a school district like Los Fresnos is at a disadvantage. These are, in, in one way, these are percentage of students of that cohort. But the students that are graduating with IBCs, especially in the health field, they're graduating with two, three, four IBCs, and they get credit for one.
Correct.
You know, if they went, IBC is percentage of, and compared that, uh, I think things would be difficult, especially in, in a district like Los Fresnos. So, uh, I'm sure that, that Austin and TA does everything to try to balance the field for everything. That's a lie, but, uh, ju, just for right now. Uh, but, they are at a disadvantage because, because they offer so many things. And these kids come out really ready, really ready for careers. Instead of just, and just, uh, a, a checkoff box. So, uh, uh, it's a shame that they don't get, I'm sure in the medical field, many of them are graduating with a phlebotomy, uh, at least, at least three or four.
Right.
So, uh, that is not taken into consideration. These are percentage of bodies that they're qualified.
As I serve on committees, one, we're gonna look to see for those students that are preparing to be teachers, what, what tier is that program gonna be at on? And the other thing is, uh, as I participate in Commissioner's Cabinet, is we, we should be striving for putting value on transferable skills. We may be par, preparing them for an industry that shuts down or completely changes by the time they graduate. So, how are they gonna be able to transfer those skills is where the emphasis should be. But for now, this is the accountability system that we have to work with.
Mr. Trevino?
Yes, uh, Dr. Stambach, you said the point, uh, will be weighted differently starting, what year? Was that twenty-seven?
Twenty-twenty-seven. Am I correct? Yes, okay. Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the board, Dr. Stambach?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stambach. District presentation item two, update by the Los Fresnos Education Foundation, Dr. Salazar.
Members of the board, the Los, which was established in twenty-twenty-three, uh, was seated by the Los Fresnos School Board. And, um, the mission is, um, or the foundation is, lies in its, its mission to be a resource to supplement and support programs geared towards the development of students and teachers within our district. And here to give an update are members of the Education Foundation Board, a group that is cohesive, very cohesive, uh, and who has worked collaboratively uh, to build a foundation from nothing, from, I'm sorry, a foundation, from, um, basically the, the seed money and the vision of the Los Fresnos CSD School Board. Uh, Mr. Don Garcia, Chairman.
Good evening, um, good evening, President Henderson, Board, Dr. Salazar, and District Chair, District, um, Cabinet. Um, I'm gonna gi, I'm gonna give you an update of what we've done over the last year. Now, we've had, we've had a significant increase in what our activities have been, and a lot of it had, as, as Dr. Salazar said, we've been around since twenty-twenty-three. We appreciate what the district has done as far as seating us. But at a certain point, we feel that we need to ourselves generate funds and create growth within this foundation. So, one of the things that kinda, like, like I say, everything has to be done in baby steps. And so, as we were going along, we encountered certain obstacles. And we, we knew that we had to get past these obstacles to go further. And one of the major obstacles we had was the development of our five oh one C status. That was a, a, an item that took more work than we thought, and it took longer than we thought. But putting that aside, once we got our status and, um...
Just as to who, who's with you today, sir?
What's that?
Who's with you today?
Oh, yes. I'm so sorry. I was gonna do that in a little bit, but, um, with, with us today are Vice Chair Lydia Garcia and our new Secretary, Dr. Trey Broach. Uh, not present today is, uh, Marisa Maya, um, Roger Rodriguez, our Treasurer, um, Sandra Langley, am I missing anybody? And Dr. Vazquez. Um, they were not able to be present today. So, oh, and Roger Rodriguez, one last member, I forgot. Um, so, getting back to our, our goals and what we have done over the last year, as I was saying, the, the major thing that we had to overcome was that nonprofit status. So, we obtained that in twenty-twenty-four in September. Last year, we had anticipated, we had expected a goal of ten thousand in funds raised. We actually raised this year thirty-one thousand three hundred and seventy. So, a lot of that had to do with the fact that we obtained that status. The status is the way we have the ability to reach out to our community and to get partners to come in and contribute, donors. So, all that is key for our organization in a foundation, especially in a nonprofit. So, getting back to that, so, we're gonna go over and we're gonna highlight some of the things that we did to engage our community. And one of the things that happened was, y'all recall there was in the district, this was a partnership with, with the foundation and the district, was the Coins for California. When the fires hit California, um, Dr. Salazar, I give him a lot of credit too. He, we all realized that there was a need there. There was something that we could do to help those people because there was a lot of devastation. And the school really stepped up. They, they all gathered, they all got their coins, and they, they raised money to send over. And that's the purpose of a nonprofit, is to give back to the community it serves. And it doesn't necessarily have to be, in this case, our community. It could be other, other communities. Um, we also are involved every year with the teachers of the district, and we do the, uh, District Teachers of the Year Award. And that's also for the elementary and secondary teachers of the year. One of the things that we did different this year is we recognized not only the two top teachers, but we also recognized the individual teachers that were from each high school or each, each campus that was nominated. And we, uh, it was a small token, but we presented each one with a, a crisp one hundred dollar bill. I thought it was just something nice to just let them know, hey, we appreciate what you do. Um, then, getting on to that, we also, um, are, we also had a situation that occurred and we had the flood. We had the flood back in March, and the campus that was severely affected was the Las Yescas Campus. It was, it was literally underwater. I mean, I'm, I'm sure y'all are aware what happened out there. And, um, with collaboration with, with the district, we, we were made aware that there was a need out there. Um, so, we decided as a foundation, this is another time that we need to step up. And so, we did a donation to that campus. I think it was, it was through the district, but we, we basically donated twenty-five hundred dollars to assist with that. Um, and then, of course, the most important thing we've done this year, and it's gonna be probably our, is gonna be a bowling tournament that we hosted. That was our major fundraiser for this year back in June. Uh, we had over sixteen, uh, corporate sponsors that collaborated with us to put this together. Uh, it was a, it was a successful event. It was held at the, um, main event, Main Event Center. Um, and like I said, I'm just recapping on some of the items. I'm gonna actually show you some of the pictures of the events we did. I'm gonna have, um, Lydia kinda touch on some of those. I'm just giving you bullets right now. But the last thing that we are very excited about is our collaboration with the Athletics Hall of Honor. The foundation has stepped up and, and gotten together with the hall to provide a mechanism by which they can actually do this event. Um, so, that is gonna be probably one of our second major fundraisers once it gets going. Um, go ahead, get the next slide. All right, and I'm gonna let Lydia kinda come in and chime in a little bit on some of these events.
Good evening, members of the board. I just wanna go ahead and go over some of the points that Mr. Garcia, uh, discussed. We did participate with the District Teachers of the Year. Uh, we thank you for inviting us to be able to collaborate, not just with the district, but also give back to our teachers. And I say our teachers because I'm a proud parent of the district. And it's very rewarding for us to be able to give back to the teachers that give so much of their time and, of course, resources back to our students. So, we were able to give the, uh, teacher, the secondary and elementary teachers of the year five hundred dollars, as well as one hundred dollars to each nominated teacher of the year for their prospective campuses. Here, uh, we collaborated with the American Red Cross and, uh, several districts across the valley to be able to give back to, uh, the California wildfires. And like I said, it was a collaboration between not just our district, um, other sponsors that, that really stepped up and said, you know what? We wanna be a part of this because it is giving back to our students, it is giving back to our communities. And even though it's not here locally for us, we know that one day, should we need it, they're gonna step up for us. Here, uh, is where Mr. Garcia was able to provide the twenty-five hundred dollar, um, donation to Las Yescas Elementary because, of course, our students were the ones that are, they don't have that, that method to be able to go and say, hey, I need this, I need that. But you know, the great thing is that the district did, and they let us know, and we were able to step in and really provide for them and the parents to be able to get some of those, um, uniforms and school supplies that were damaged. And right here, our first annual bowling tournament, which couldn't have been possible without our sponsors. We had, uh, a lot of corporate sponsors really come and step up and help us make this event wonderful. This is where we were able to raise over two hundred percent of what we estimated our original goal of ten thousand. So, thanks to our sponsors, we were able to make this a great event, and we hope to continue this partnership with our sponsors and, of course, the district. We also thank you for being a part of, of, um, the tournament and really showing the students as well. Because a lot of the students that I did speak with were very excited to be able to compete against, not just the board members, but also coaches. So, we thank you for that. And here are just some more pictures. And then, last but not least, we did, um, set up social media pages. We do wanna go ahead and keep that transparency and keep that collaboration, not just with the community, but also with sponsors. So, we do have our LinkedIn page. We do have Facebook and as well Instagram because our students are the most important thing that we're working, uh, here for. So, we want students to also be a part of our communication. And Instagram is really big for them, so we, um, now have our Instagram page. So, please, um, help us really share our pages so that way, as more events start coming up, especially with the Athletics Hall of Honor, we're able to share that with the community and make them a part of this as well. And once again, thank you so much for your collaboration, your contributions, and for your help and guidance.
Thank, thank you. Uh, any comments from the board on that report?
I just wanna thank Mr. Garcia. You all and your whole board have really stepped up. It's not easy to start an organization from the ground up. I can't believe in 2024, you filed and already raised over $30,000 when it's very difficult to raise money. So, congratulations. I was able to be present the day that Mr. Garcia, I mean, showed up to give out the $100 bills to the teacher, they were the teacher nominees, and it was over here at the CTE. And you're like, well, is it a, a big deal, a $100 bill? It made everyone feel happy. I think a lot of you were there. And it was just, you could just see the excitement. They just felt appreciated. I think all of us do. So, like I said, I think that was a great, a great idea to do that, just share a little bit and encourage them. So, thank you for everything you all have done. You all are amazing. Anyone else? Mr. Trevino?
I do wanna make a comment in regards to your fundraising event. I had a blast. I had not bowled in a decade, over a decade. You know, that was really, really awesome. And, and thank you all for putting that together, and I'm, I'm happy it was a success. I mean, it was a blast for me. I'm sure, you know, we did come in second, second place. So, just wanna put that out there. This next, next year, we will be ready to take first. I'm just, I'm just putting it out there right now, okay? So-
I was gonna say, you better tell, tell that to David Cantu.
He, if he's watching, David Cantu, we're coming for you, buddy.
Thank you.
I, I, I know the Coins for California, the comment was made that, you know, wasn't local. What I loved about it is it, it's such a good example for our kids to see that, well, what happened here, what happens here changes the world, right? That's our motto. And it does. It goes beyond us, and we have to think beyond us. So, that's why I really appreciated the fact that you all did the Coins for California, 'cause I think it was a great example for the kids to think beyond just Los Fresnos and how we can help more people.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia, Mr. Trevino, anyone else? Thank you again for all your efforts. We look forward to, to the next event in December. Yeah. If you'd like to excuse yourselves, please feel free to leave. If you wanna stay and hear the rest of the reports, you're welcome to stay as well. Item number nine, district reports. One, finance reports. Dr. Salazar?
Mr. Henderson, members of the board, we present, the, the majority of our finance reports are made up by, was out the, the previous school year. So, we wonder if you have any regarding those financial reports this time?
I know we've all reviewed those reports. They're complete, including, we have the check registered and everything, so we all review those. So, thank you. I think we're fine. Item number two, 2025-2026 elementary field trips. Dr. Salazar?
Mr. Henderson, members of the board, on page 63 of board book, you see the field trips, the majority of which build experiences for kids. We know that experiences build schema, and new vocabulary and new learning is attached to the schema that kids acquire during these experiences. But you can see also from our report, many of the trips, many of our students are going to be making trips to the Performing Arts Center this year, instead of going outside of the district for, to teach appreciation of the arts. That's gonna happen right here in, in our school district. And the funds from those field trips go directly to support the programs, the scripts, the, the plays that they need to, to purchase, to continue to enrich the lives of community members and students in our district. Will entertain any questions you might have or comments or suggestions?
Comments? I was just gonna say, I thought it's wonderful that I saw, I think you have Annie and you have another production coming up. That's just fantastic to use that asset.
Annie in December and Junie B. Jones in the spring, the fall, I'm sorry.
That's a wonderful use of the, the asset that you all have been working on to, to build out here, where we can use it. So, thank you. Item three, trustee reports. Does anyone have a report? Again, trustee reports, we picked that up from S L I. Ms. Julie Call of H E B School District, they do that at H E B to allow the members to report all the great things they see in the district. It's just, what do you see and, and report back to the board? Did anyone have a comment, something they've done, or visited? Mr. Trevino?
So, I did attend some of the middle schools, back to school evenings and stuff, and, and just wished the principals a good year. And so, I'm hoping that, you know, it'll be a success, another successful year for us. But just wanted to share with you, the campuses look good, and, and they were really excited. They were really excited and looking forward to the new year. So, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Trevino. I think that's excellent. I'm gonna piggyback off of that comment, Mr. Trevino, 'cause I had the opportunity to attend Los Fresnos High School. They had a parent night. I attended that. And you're walking through the halls, and I don't get out, out there very often, but all the teachers are excited. At 6:00 in the afternoon, they've been there all day. And I'm tired. I get there and they have energy. And Mr. Stumble, you know, I ran through him like three or four times as I'm circling the school. So, he must be in a really great condition. He's out there and, and, and present, and I compliment that because that's why he has such a great rapport with students. We've often commented, why does he know every student's name at graduation? He's always there meeting everyone. So, I, I thought that was fantastic. I also had opportunity to, to visit L F E. And that was kinda on my way to Rotary Club. I was like, let me stop by L F E. And that was pretty neat. I think I saw L F E, who did I see? Ms. Grimaldo. And I had a chance, 15 minutes, I walked in right before the Rotary Club, and she was there with her staff, and they had all the projectors up and introduced me to some staff. And just very professional, how they were gonna lay it out. And I thanked her and her staff for doing everything. Again, everyone, I'm walking down the hall, everyone is energetic and excited. And all of a sudden, I hear Donald, and it's one of the peers from Laureles, when I was at Laureles in PTA. She had shared a story. She's like, I'm at L F E now, I'm Mr. Gaspari. She's like, I left the district to go to another job, and I had to come back because I love working with students. So, I think those are the stories that we love hearing. People come here because they love the environment, like Dr. Salazar says. If we can, I have one other report. Mr. Amaya, I don't know if you can go to the next slide. I don't know if they are able to get this slide on the Tasby? Yes. Mr. Amaya has always been advocating for Tasby. And maybe I, you know, I took him at his word, but, you know, I drank the Kool-Aid, and I really believe what it is. It's amazing since I've been on this board. I call them. They hate hearing me call now. But I'm learning so much, and I signed up for a class, Board Officer Institute Training, and it's a seven-week class. I started in July. I've even missed Rotary Club meetings, 'cause we have this, this has been going on at evenings. But I just wanna share with everyone, you know, we all talk about, we wanna, like Dr. Salazar and Halsworth and the cabinet, they're always improving. They work full-time, and they're still taking time to improve themselves. And it inspired me, well, I can, I can try that. And I did a class. And Ms. Orozco from Tasby conducted an amazing class. And some of the, I can't read it from here, but they cover, you know, board officers' roles and responsibilities. Robert's rules of order, running effective board meeting, managing conflict, goal setting, superintendent evaluation. And we're with trustees from all of the state of Texas. But it's just a great way to learn and do better job, just like we're asking everyone to be lifelong learners. I've been challenged by Mr. Amaya, and, you know, I welcome everyone, you know, consider taking it. It's just usually, it's about a three-hour a week commitment, but it was a fantastic course. So, that completes my, my report. Anyone else? Okay. Next item on the agenda, action item. Discuss and take action to approve the superintendent's personnel recommendations for the following positions for 2024-2025 school year. A teacher, B speech pathologist. Ms. Trevino?
Garcia? Anyway, it's late.
I'm sorry, Mr. Trevino had raised his hand first, and then you raised your hand. So, yeah. Thank you, Ms. Garcia.
I move to approve the superintendent's personnel recommendations for the 2025-2026 school year for teacher and speech-language pathologist intern.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Mr. Trevino, discussion. All in favor, please raise your hands. Motion carries unanimously. Are there new teachers here? If, okay. We're, we're delighted to extend a warm welcome to our newest employees for the 2025-2026 school year, as recommended by our superintendent. We're confident that your skills, dedication, and passion will be invaluable assets to Los Fresnos C I S D, and we look forward to the positive impact you will have on our students and our schools. Welcome aboard. I'd like to ask Vice President Castillo to recognize our new employees.
Let's welcome to, Mr. Alberto Perez, teacher at CTE. Also, wants to take pictures. Also, I would like to welcome Special Services, Ms. Carmen Cadengo. Is she here? Congratulations and welcome to Los Fresnos.
Thank you so much for- If y'all would like to be excused, it's, again, it's a school night. Don't feel like you have to stay here. But thank you for joining us, and we look forward to seeing you on the campuses. Trustees, if you allow me, I'm gonna go ahead and move to our consent agenda, item number 13. Are there any items you'd like to pull from the agenda? I would like to pull item number three. So, I entertain a motion, if there are no other items, for items one, two, four to seven. Do you have a motion? Mr. Trevino?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I move that the board approve consent agenda one, two, four through seven, as written on today's agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Trevino. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Montes, discussion. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Okay. That'll move it to an action item, correct? We need to go ahead and do that? We'll move to item three, consider and approve campus improvement plan for 2025-2026 school year. Just a, a comment. I looked at page on, on 107, the district improvement plan. I just want, one, I wanted to thank and acknowledge all the work for D E I C. I think they still do all of this behind the scenes, and it's made up of parents and teachers, administrators. I remember Ms. Amaro, I remember Mr. McDonough was always there, Dr. Salazar, when I was on that committee, and you learn so much about our district. So, please thank them, that we appreciate all their work to show up at those meetings, after meetings, after meetings, to get this done for us. But I did, I was looking at goal one, object two, reduce the number of students that are seeking mental health support by 5%. I, I know that's just a, a number percentage point, but is that based on what?
I, I think we need to make a motion, and a second before we go to discussion. And if you'll allow me, I, I move that we approve a campus improvement plan for the 25-26 school year.
Thank you, 'cause of the correction. Thank you, Mr. Amaya. Do I have a second? Ms. Garcia. Now, we'll go to discussion. So, discussion is just asking about that health, mental health by 5%. What is that based on, or how do we get there?
I'll go ahead and take that. I oversee the counseling department. It's, so, after COVID-19, we saw a tremendous uptick in the number of students who were needing mental health support. We have seen that slowly start to go down, which is definitely a good sign, but it's still not back to pre-pandemic levels. And I, if we were to get it close, if we were to decrease it by close to 5%, we would be back to pre-pandemic levels. So, I think that's kind of what the goal is loosely there. But we also, I think it's also important to realize that in some ways, life will never be the same, right? And so, just, there's always gonna continue to be challenges that didn't face you or I when we were these kids' age. And so, I think that's important to keep in mind as well. So, we didn't wanna go directly back to pre-pandemic levels, but somewhat closer in that range, if that makes sense.
Yes, that makes sense. Thank you. Any other items on, anyone wanna discuss? All in favor, please raise your hands. Oh, Mr. Trevino?
Just really quick, and I, and I'm sure the answer is yes, but I just wanna put it out there. So, by reducing the number of students that are seeking mental health support by 5%, we're not taking away any of the supports that we've put in place, or any of the processes that we've put in place.
Absolutely not. What, what we're tracking is the number of referrals. So, if a student is referred for that, absolutely, they are gonna get that service. But we are tracking is the number of students that are having to be referred for that going down. And we do see it slowly going down.
I just wanted to get that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trevino. We have a motion, a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Action item 14, action items. One, discuss and take action to approve a resolution committee fund balance for fiscal year 2025, the amount to be determined subsequent to fiscal year end closed. I have a motion. Mr. Montes?
Motion to approve, sir.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Trevino, discussion. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Discuss and take action to award agreement contracts for RFP number 24-25-23, child nutrition services, kitchen equipment to Bargreen Ellison, Inc. Do I have a motion? Mr. Castillo?
Motion to approve, sir.
Do I have a second? Ms. Quintero, discussion. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Action item 14 dot three, discuss and take action to approve the revisions to the board policy CH Local to be adopted in the first reading. Do I have a motion? Mr. Amaya, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Montes, discussion. All in favor, please raise your hands. Motion carries unanimously. That will take us to, I'm gonna go back to action item, I'm sorry, to closed session, item 11, percent to chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including but not limited to 551.074. Item two, discuss superintendent's annual formative evaluation. Time- Oh, and then we'll also have consultation with legal. Thank you. Time is 7:27. We'll adjourn for closed session. Hi, Mr. Castillo. Time is 8:07. We returned from closed session. It's now open session, item 12. Discuss, item two, discuss and take action to approve the formative performance evaluation of the superintendent, as discussed in executive session. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, sir.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Ms. Quintero, discussion. All in favor, please raise your hands. Motion carries. Item number 15, meeting is adjourned at 8:08.